Nick Schumacher. Here, somebody. I'm here, Diana Smith.
Here.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
President Olson.
Here. You all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the free, public, righteous hands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comments signup sheet prior to the start of the meeting. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. So first up on our agenda this evening is our regular school board meeting. An action taken at today's meeting will be final approval, unless otherwise noted. Our first item is comments by members of the public. First speaker is Gary Neamy.
Hello. Sitting over here.
Sure, if you'd like.
I wanted to comment, both my wife and I are here. We're members, well, I'm a former member of this school district and also a 30-year retired international guard. And we're also on the board of the Windshield Legacy, which is, we take, this is pre-COVID. Now, you gotta take us forward, but backwards we took up. We take miniature horses and we visit schools, teaching kids about how to respect animals, which was the theme of our program, is respect. And just wanted to comment because we saw on the meeting minutes that this was a second reading, which I, sorry, I missed the first one, about animals in the school district. And it said there's service animals, but we're talking about a therapy, therapy horses. They have many horses, they're about, you know, 30 some inches tall max. And these were, we have a new set, but we're training them. We're working on training them. Anyway, they're trained, they know what they're doing. We get them registered with pet partners, just like a therapy dog. But your policy says therapy dogs, you know, it just mentions therapy dogs. It does not mention any other type of therapy animal. And we would like you to change that policy to reflect therapy, registered therapy animals of some type. Because it just says healthy dogs, and that would kind of put us out of business because both my wife and myself have been associated with the school district for quite a while. And we would just like to continue that association. And I realize there are other types of animals. We had, I had lots of issues. I was building the grounds director for 11 years, I think it was. So I know what those things are, and I've been part of the safety committees and stuff like that. So I know there's other animals around that teachers have brought in that sometimes is not the best thing for the students. But this is a special, you know, they're registered. The program deals with them just like dogs. There are other animals. I don't know of anybody around that has any other animals. Perhaps Polly knows of some other animals that are therapy animals besides dogs and horses. But those are the two that I know specifically. I don't know if there's any questions or?
Do you want me to add again?
Well, you are next up, Polly, as the speaker.
So, so I guess that would be what I have to talk about. Please amend that policy to include therapy in.
Thank you, Gary. Our next speaker is Polly Neamy.
I was saying, once a teacher, always a teacher. And I've been retired, I think, for eight years now, something like that, a number of years. And two words were never spoken. What we have, we have educational outreachers. And what we do is teach, I have a PowerPoint that I made. And I use Talking Pets, an app, and the animals tell the children what it is they need to be properly cared for. And as Gary said, the theme is respect. R stands for room, E stands for eat, S stands for space, blah, blah, blah. Anyhow, and we teach the children through these talking animals. We say almost nothing. The animals on the PowerPoint tell the children what they need. There are so many kids whose families have animals that aren't well cared for. And by teaching children, you guys know that's why you're here, by teaching children the proper way to do things, that that's a huge help in animal abuse and neglect. Now, we've been to, I think, every school in the district with our program. And our little mini horses come right into the classroom. They're potty trained. They're, we chose them so carefully. I used to do obedience training with dogs. And we also have a therapy golden retriever who comes in sometimes if horses can't. But anyhow, the children are seated in a semicircle. We take the little, one or two little horses around, and they stop in front of some of the children. The other ones, they just kind of keep going. They maybe sniff them a little bit. A lot of these children have never had a horse, much less a horse that is by their shoulders. And I've been at the grocery store, and these kids will say, oh, that's Mrs. Polly with her horses. And I think we've made a difference. We just don't want to be precluded from going into the schools by one, by one missing word. Yes, there are some therapy cats around, if you can imagine that, but they're amazing. But anyhow, we have our dog and we have, we actually have three mini horses that we're now training. Our old ones are retired or lost a couple of them. They were no longer alive. Anyhow, I think it's a really important educational opportunity. And I just want to continue doing it. I don't know, do you have, do you have any questions? The principals have all really enjoyed having us come in. The kids, of course, absolutely love it. And we both, as having been employees of the district, me as a teacher, the first concern is children. Those animals are going to behave. And if for some reason, and we always know, we can tell if one of our horses gets a little bit, you know, like, uh, like Gary's little guy that he used to take in when he, when he was getting tired, he'd kind of nudge Gary. And so we'd say, okay, it's time. I think he wants to go home now, so we're very in tune to them. There are also people in Duluth that do the same thing in the Duluth Public Schools. So, and we've gone to Duluth, we've gone to Proctor, we've gone to Esco, Two Harbors. Anyhow, Superior is our home, and that's where we want to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to us.
Our final speaker this evening is Kristina Kintop.
Actually, I think I have something to speak on the policies that were pulled off the table.
Thank you.
It's my assumption that they've been pulled off. I'll speak later.
Back to our agenda then. At the committee meeting last Monday, the August 7th following, people spoke on policies 0142.5 and 0.0144.5. Christina Kintop, Rob Morehouse, Mary Smith Johnson, Monica Tickenen, Orda Gapsky, Craig Peterson, and Jonathan Asp. Next up is the disposition of minutes from July 10, 2023. Approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from July 10, 2023. Is there any discussion? Quite light that evening. The agenda items. Up for the policies. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We had a report from the superintendent where she discussed her goals and action plans for the school year and everything. It was a very detailed approach. Any comments from anybody? Okay, we shall move on. Court Committee reports, the Policy and Rules Committee is our first report this evening. There was a new action item, however, I am making a motion to remove the action item as an action item and to move it as an informational item.
Approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to move that new action item consideration of the state statutes and policies to informational. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So Vice President Albrecht, you expressed any interest and request to, not only our board members, but to the public.
Yeah, I meant, I had something written up. I contacted you to see if you'd be interested in reading through this. I'll call it a timeline of what's happened since most of the public doesn't understand. And I'll say, maybe everybody, maybe you're the only one on the board in front of that knows timeline besides me. But I thought I'd just go through this. Again, just so that the public and current board members understand, I'd like to review the timeline that's led to where we are today regarding Steve Stupak. In the fall of 2021, Director of Human Resources asked Board Member Stupak if he was done building his house. He said it was getting close. I questioned the Director of Human Resources about the inquiry, and she explained she had heard about him building a house in Duluth and thought he was living there and not in our district any longer. After hearing this and realizing it was a requirement that you needed to be living in the district you're serving in, I did a simple White Pages search which showed Board Member Stupak's address, S 7725 Congdon Boulevard in Duluth. I investigated further and found more information that indicated that Board Member Stupak did indeed live in Duluth. Those items, I have in a packet. I'm not going to go through the whole packet tonight. I have them, if anybody wants to review them, they can get one after the meeting from me if they're interested. At that time, I called the WASB with this information, and they said that they had no authority, but I should contact the Wisconsin Ethics or the Wisconsin Elections Commission. At that time, I called the Wisconsin Ethics Commission, and they said I should contact the Wisconsin Elections Commission. And then when I called the Wisconsin Elections Commission, they said I should take my findings to our school's attorney or to our local DA. But before turning the information over to the DA, I discussed it with our school attorney and met with the board members individually at the time about what I'd found. It was decided that the first step I should take would be to meet with the board, with Board Member Stupak and review with him what I had found and ask him to step down. I met with Board Member Stupak on March 16, 2022, to discuss what I had found. He told me Duluth was his cabin and that his wife lived there, and he visited on weekends and that he was living at a house on Highway 35 that he had purchased from his brother. He also stated he owned a fourplex at 10244th Avenue East that he sometimes stayed at. He showed me his driver's license, which did have the address of 5740 South State Highway 35. He stated that he paid taxes in Superior, and he would not be leaving the board. And just, please note that in that packet, there's information on the property, that those properties were sold between 2021 and 2022. That's per the Douglas County Property Sumaries. On March 18th, two days after I met with him, Board Member Stupak messaged me saying he had contacted John Ashley and Attorney Barry Forbes at WASB, and that I should contact them. I then reached out to the WASB Attorney Barry Forbes, who said he had spoken to Steve, but based on the information I had, he said I should submit what I had found to the local DA since they could probably find more details than what I was able to find. I then turned over the information I had found to the DA's office on April 1st, 2022, for review and to act on if warranted. Steve and I received, each received a letter from the Elections Commission on March of 2023. I met with Steve again on March 29th to review the letter and told him, based on the direction from others, including the WASB Attorney Barry Forbes, that I had turned the information I showed him at our previous meeting over to the DA's office. He said he understood, and that in my position, I needed to do that, but he wasn't worried about it. On July 21st, I did receive a notice from the DA's office that they were going to be filing, 21st of 2023, I received a notice from the DA's office that they were going to be filing felony charges against Board Member Stupak. Now, I want to be clear that the intent of my investigation was part of my duties. It was not to get felony charges brought against Board Member Stupak, but to only prove that he no longer resided in our district and that his seat on the board should have been considered vacant. That's, that's timeline.
Thank you. When you look at your meeting minutes, or whether you were online or in print, so the Wisconsin statutes that were listed, 8.28, 17.03, 17.13, 120.6, 946.112, and then the policies of 0142.2, 0142.5, and 0144.5. But these are all directly related to us as school board members and our responsibilities or to the question that I asked of Mr. Torvonen is, what could we really, as a school board, to take a look at the possibility of removing Mr. Stupak as a school board member? So I think that's very important. There's, there's some misinformation. There was some stuff on social media that we were hiding from it, that we were being complicit, that, that we weren't being transparent. But I feel as what Len did, you want to make sure that you're researching to the best of your abilities to make sure that when we come back, when I come back or we come back to the public, that we can exactly state, these are the statutes that we must follow. These are the policies that we must follow. Saying that, this morning at 9:57 a.m., I received a phone call from Stephen Stupak. He informed me that he was going to resign. I thanked you, I thanked him for his service and said, you need to do me one favor, and that was to get over to the school board office and to make it official in writing. At 10:14 a.m. this morning, he officially resigned in writing. First of all, Len, I want to thank you for your dedicated description of the conversations and the steps you took once you received a complaint about Mr. Stupak possibly not living in the school district of Superior. It's a responsibility that's heavy. It weighed on you, it has weighed on all of us in the past two and a half weeks, but you took on this responsibility and you performed your duties exemplary. First of all, second rather, I want to thank all board members for not getting involved in the public comment regarding criminal charges Board Member Stupak is facing. Kyle Torvonen, our City District School Board Attorney, reminded all of you in an email, refraining from commenting on this situation, and I appreciate you following his advice. It is also important to point out that four of you sitting here today were not board members when the president, when President Albrecht received his information and began his investigation. You were completely unaware of these proceedings up until you first saw or heard of it. And we were at a point where those of us that did know, because we could not say anything about it, unfortunately could not share anything with you. So again, you first saw it in the, in the news. And that's what happened, and I'm sorry. I want to also thank Kyle and his office for their relentless work in researching multiple state statutes that address all school boards can or cannot proceed in this situation. It should be noted that during his and his team's investigation that this is truly an anomaly, is there is no case study in the state of Wisconsin in reference to this type of situation. I further wish to acknowledge that Mr. Torvonen, at my request, did provide us with input on board power and authority to take certain actions, which he did in his first opinion dated 8/7/23. He also provided us with an updated opinion on 8/10/23. There were some things that we would have covered tonight, and we had to move forward with, with the recommendation. We were going to cover general expectations of all board members. We're going to review policy 144.5, excuse me, 01445.5 about board member behavior and code of conduct. We're going to review Kyle's information on page three of his first opinion about two separate, separate issues. And to speak about the enforcement provision information provided in his first opinion from Kyle. In the end, we would have looked at five options that Kyle presented us as a summation as to what we could move forward and to do. Those options, the board has the right, first of all, number one, the board has the right of censure, removal of committee assignments, and a variety of other remedial actions to diminish the role of Mr. Stupak that are set forth in the statute I previously cited in my last opinion. Number two, the board can make a referral to the judge of the district court, in which the elected official sits, Douglas County, and seek to have the official removed for cause, which would be a trial to a judge. Three, the board can make a verified complaint to the Attorney General's Office that the elected official lived outside of the jurisdiction, which the Attorney General's Office would then have the option of bringing a civil action, quorale, to have the official removed. Four, the board could, aside from all the authority referenced above, determine on its own to declare the seat vacant and press the issue onto Mr. Stupak's court in order to see whether he would contest the action. This option with the risk that if it was contested, the court could overturn the board's determination. Finally, the board could allow the prosecution through the Douglas County District Attorney's Office to run its course, and if Mr. Stupak is convicted of a felony, his office is declared vacant and is not contestable. So we had these things again that we had to follow and, and we had it clearly put to us in print what we could have done had we had to move forward. But as I reported, Mr. Stupak has now resigned. Any comments or questions by board members?
Just a thank you to Kyle. That's what you, the work you guys put in, it was a lot, and it was very detailed. I appreciate it. Clear, give clarity to what we're looking at.
If hearing nothing else, we will continue to move on.
Can I reclaim my time, Steve?
I believe.
So we, pardon, that's your call. Yes.
Do you want me to come up then?
Please.
All right, as many of you know, I'm Dr. Christina Kintop and served on board for 20 years. And the reason I wanted to come and speak now, I know you moved public comment in the beginning, but it kind of depended on what the action, what the conversation would be, whether I would speak or not. I just wanted to stand up here and thank the board. I want to let you know that I was on the board when this all was starting to happen. I was the vice president at the time. Len was my president, and he came to me with the information and simply said, what do I do? My opinion as his vice president was to do his due diligence and look into it. I felt very strongly that if that information was presented to us, Len had to, under his duty, look to see if that information was correct or not. So I stood by him through this whole thing for the last two years. And I just want to reiterate that everything Len just read off that timeline was accurate. He did his due diligence. He took exceptional notes at every step of the way of this investigation. He has spent countless hours doing this. He was thorough, he was fair, and he was transparent. The justice system moves very slowly, frustratingly so. And I know this is what was frustrating a lot of people on social media. Why didn't this board do anything sooner? We really couldn't. We couldn't speak of it. We couldn't really move forward any faster because of how it was going down. What I tried to express to people on social media is this is not the board's fault. It's not even the board's job to remove a board member. You are not obligated, nor legally can you remove a board member because they are elected by the, by the people. However, you can follow policy, which is what you were looking into. I wanted to remind people that this was on Steve Stupak and Steve Stupak only. He chose to do, to take out nomination papers with an address that wasn't correct. He chose to not let us know when he moved, which was, again, unprecedented. We weren't entirely sure how to move forward with it. So I want to thank the board for listening to us 14 former board members last week. We felt very compelled to come and speak to you, that you should enforce your policy, which is what you're planning on doing. You know, I, I'm a little saddened that Steve didn't do the right thing immediately for the district and for the administration, the board, the community, the kids, all of these things. It was not extra work you guys needed right now. You've got a lot more on your plate that I know. So I just wanted to come up and speak again and thank the board for, I know what has, well, I don't know because I wasn't behind the scenes, but I've been behind the scenes for 20 years. I know what, what, what can happen. And I wish the onus was on Steve, and he would have done the right thing right from the get-go. So now that we have a clear slate, I hope you guys can move forward and really concentrate on what's best for the district. But again, I did want to stand up and corroborate everything that Len said tonight as absolutely accurate and the work that he put into it. So, so thank you, Len, for all that work.
Thank you. And now to move on. So tonight, we have a lot of policies to go through. But the first, second readings that we're going to go through was from our meeting live. First policy is the second reading of 1,400 job descriptions. Maybe do.
Approve.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Do you want any, any context on any of this?
No, this is just aligns with our current practice.
Cleaning up what we're doing and?
Yep. And the majority of these you're seeing tonight are Niola recommendations, and most of them are pretty minimal in language changes.
Ready for the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next policy, 2340, field trip and other district-sponsored trips.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve 234 field and other district-sponsored trips. Is there any discussion?
A question was asked regarding whether the board should consider restricting international travel. I did some checking with other school districts. Some school districts do not allow international travel. Some do not allow school-sponsored international travel. And if teachers choose to take students out of the country, they have to have parents sign a waiver letter. So that is something, I don't, not saying necessarily tonight, but it is something if you are interested in restricting travel. There are some other districts that do that, so.
So historically, I know that we have had a number of overseas field trips throughout my tenure.
I think the concern is with some foreign country travel, there can be significant concerns around supervision and safety for students, depending on where and the time, you know, of the.
And that be weighed at the time that they're setting that up. I mean, you can see what the level of.
A lot of, like a year in advance, though.
Yeah, a lot of them are a year old.
Yeah, so a lot can change over the course of a year.
That could change, but if it changes, then things have to be canceled.
Discretion. Yeah, but there's no process in place to, there's no guidelines in place as to when we would say an event would, would be canceled. And part of the challenge with canceling a trip is you have. And part of the challenge with canceling a trip is you have kids and parents who do fundraising. And so there would be some frustration there from people who have raised a significant amount of money that would get their money back. A lot of the trips that we've done overseas, you do not get refunds, and we experienced that during COVID, where we had kids who were supposed to head to Costa Rica, I think, and they weren't able to get their money back for that trip.
But if that's all laid out in advance, they know that's a risk they're taking, I would think. And you don't want to just cut it off.
I think the concern was consider travel to foreign countries can increase concerns around student safety and supervision is at a risk we want to take as a school district. So I just wanted to share with you, some districts do restrict it, some districts obviously allow it. So if that's something the board wants to consider, and you don't have to necessarily consider it tonight, it's something we can revise and add if we needed to, but.
Yeah, that's something I can think about, could like an agenda items for discussion at another.
We can bring this back up as a.
Think about it.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, and increase district viability. Something.
I know somebody walked.
Somebody alters or arm or their alter upon a nail.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of policy twenty-four twelve, homebound instruction program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the homebound instruction program twenty-four twelve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of policy three, one, three, nine, staff discipline.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second to approve three, one, three, nine, staff discipline. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second reading of three, one, four, zero, nonrenewal resignation and termination.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve policy three, one, four, zero, nonrenewal resignation and termination. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of policy three, two, two, zero, staff evaluation.
Approve.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve policy thirty-two, twenty, staff evaluation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Second reading of policy three, three, six, two point zero one, threatening behavior towards staff members.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve policy three, three, six, two point zero one, threatening behavior of ready, excuse me, threatening behavior towards staff members. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of policy four, three, six, two point zero one, threatening behavior towards staff members.
Move to approve. Okay.
Motion and a second to approve policy four, three, six, two point zero one, behavior towards staff members. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The next set of policies are the first reading from August seventh now become our second reading this evening. Second reading of policy five, one, 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 eligibility of resident, non-resident students.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve policy fifty-one, eleven, eligibility of residents and non-residents staff students. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of a new policy, five, five, zero, zero point zero one, conduct in the virtual classroom.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve new policy fifty-five hundred point zero one, conduct in the virtual classroom. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The second reading of new policy fifty-five forty point zero one, investigations involving suspected child abuse.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second for new policy fifty-five forty point zero one, investigations involving suspect suspected child abuse. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of new policy fifty-six thirty point zero one, use of seclusions and physical restraint with students.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the new policy fifty-six thirty point zero one, use of seclusions and physical restraints with students. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of policy sixty-five ten, payroll authorization.
Second.
Motion and a second for policy sixty-five ten, payroll or authorization. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second reading of policy seventy-three hundred, disposition of real property.
Second.
So motion and a second for policy seventy-three hundred, disposition of real property. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of the new policy seventy-five sixty, naming rights and naming school facilities.
Approve.
Second.
Motion and a second for policy seventy-five sixty, naming rights and naming school facilities. Is there any discussion? I want to thank you, Amy, for getting this taken care of totally out of.
The only one that's not a Neola update.
Right. Because we didn't have any language.
And we've had people inflaring.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of the new policy eighty-three ninety, animals on district property, replacing ninety-one sixty point zero one.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second for C eight, three, nine, zero, animals on district property, replacing nine, one, six point zero one.
Can I add a couple of comments?
Yes.
One is I we did make the changes that were requested last week, so hopefully those were, I haven't heard back from anybody, so hopefully those were okay. And then just wanted to make comment on Amy's request. I think when we put therapy dog, I think that might have been oversight, and I would support if that was changed to animal as opposed to dogs. I'll leave it up to you.
I agree, but then doesn't point C talk about miniature horses in particular? They specifically mention it, so that's a good thing, but I I agree with the change.
I think it could just be animal, because they still have to be licensed.
I agree.
That was the biggest requirement.
I was gonna point out same lines right above it says non-service animals in schools and elsewhere still allows it with curriculum and approval with the school administrators. So they're bringing horses in for a curriculum or study or something special, it does already.
It allows for that.
Animals to come in for those purposes with the approval of the principal and everything else, and also having guidance on students have allergies or affected or whatever the case is. So I kind of think there's already already approved it essentially for those for schools. This doesn't call it therapy animal, but I think it would fall under that. It's all but they're using it for curriculum, right? Some sort of curriculum.
We are, but in the service animals section, service animals are very, very, very specific.
They're specific to, yeah.
People with disabilities.
Right.
And there are, there are service horses, mini horses, but that's a whole different deal, and our animals are not service animals.
So then it would be more appropriate to indeed therapy animals.
Yeah.
And then change.
They still are required then to follow the licensure requirements in the other part.
Any place it says dog, we would change that to.
Yeah.
Animal.
So I think if the board wanted to make that revise that motion to approve with those additions, if that's what the board wants.
And I just ask, because I'm not familiar with how service dogs or animals become service animals versus how they become therapy animals? Like, who puts the title on it? If they're if they're two, if they're two different things, I imagine a doctor might put a title on a service animal. What's, do you know the difference?
Specifically trained. It involves a special with special programs. There are some prisons even that use that as part of their program. They are taught to do things like open doors, people who may have seizures.
It actually outlines, I think, all of the different services that they can provide up there.
Okay, and that's it's a very specific thing. It's like the seeing eye dogs that you see. Horses, many horses also use that sometimes. And and the other thing too that I forgot to mention was with the therapy dog. Down here it says go with a therapist volunteer. Our animals, I'm not a therapist. I'm just an old teacher. So that was a little bit, I just don't want principals to feel like, well, because the board the board outlines say this, that we can't let you come in.
I think the difference, though, is the therapy dog does need to be with a therapist because of the licensure component as opposed to a support animal, because we are not allowing support animals on campus, which is a different thing, which do not require the same level of licensing.
They're wanting a therapy horse. Right? Therapy horse.
Right.
So that wouldn't that that definition would match with their stance.
There are, there are two organizations in the country that I'm aware of. Therapy Dogs International and Pets Partners, which used to be a thing called Delta. And they, they will certify animals to be therapy animals, and they're not a therapist that they go with, but they are, they go, they have to be tested, they have to take all these, but they have to be, our horses have to be housebroken. And they go through a specific, very, very careful testing program to make sure that they're safe with kids. So they aren't necessarily going with therapists, although that's one thing they do do. There's a program called Read with Horses, I think it's, or Read with Animals, and they use saddle wagons to move where the animals go into the classroom and then let kids read to them because the kids are less self-conscious about reading to an animal. So those were the two things on that, the therapy dog and go with therapists.
If you go up, though, that answers that question. Can you go up?
No, sorry, the other way. Keep going, I think. There's the the non-service, keep going, keep going right here.
That talks about where the documentation, I think that's. So maybe that's why it is specific to dogs, because those are the agencies that certify.
So if you were to change just the therapy animals, there's a lot later that you'd have to change just the word. And I guess that was my point I try and get to is if anybody doesn't eat any animal as a therapy animal, so we're having snakes and cats and.
Or kinds.
They, you know, so I'm wondering what at what level is is we able to designate, so if this is just for dogs.
Better A takes care of that because Pet Partners is who we go through. And those particular organizations are very, very specific as to the training that the animals have to receive to be registered. And they also have a million dollar insurance policy attached on to them once they are registered with at least for pet partners.
This is solid.
Does this eliminate like elementary schools? I know a lot of them bring like baby chicks.
Their.
Well, it goes back to Ed's point, I think, that that can be part of curriculum.
But it says they must have.
This is the Neola one again, right? So.
Have health certificate or report of exactly.
We can accept or we don't. We can amend. So what what if we have a section that was just therapy horse?
Well, they sort of already have some statement in there about miniature horses specific to students with disabilities.
And could you go up to the very beginning of this document? Is this the beginning?
ADA.
Okay, I guess it's the fairy tale. There we go, part C. No, keep going. There's another section here. This section.
Non-service animals in schools, which is, is that your point, Diana? That.
Yes, not service, but then it says like, for example.
Required by law.
If required, yeah.
Staff members seeking approval of a non-service animal in their class. So this can also potentially, I think, allow for the miniature horses in our schools, couldn't it?
Well, I think I think this one would allow for
Right.
the horses, because you're.
So I'm saying I don't think we need to make a revision.
Basically, yes, and the principal of the school will say, hey, got this curriculum, whatever. Can we bring in our horses for a presentation and the curriculum for the kids? And I think the principal would be.
Distraction to do that.
And this is where the like the 4K does the baby chicks and everything that covers all of that. So.
They do caterpillars.
Each of that whole, yeah.
Yep.
I think if we're gonna rewrite the whole policy, I think we'd have to table it to get more information and get it spelled out properly for all animals and not just a horse.
I I really recommend that we don't change the therapist piece with the therapy dog because I I think we really want to be careful that we don't have a variety of different type of support animals coming in that are not licensed, that are not with a therapist. So.
I think we'd have to keep the therapy dog section.
Right.
You'd have to add a whole another section if you wanted to have just another end. Save them all and birds, horses.
Those particular organizations that we listed up there, they're very specific as to what animals they will register. And they will be, and I believe it's only, well, there might be rabbits. But anyhow, there's only cats, dogs, miniature horses. I think that's about all. But they're very specific as to what can be registered. That section doesn't require licensing either. If you look up, does it? Like the other section.
No, but the other sections say you have to have licensure if you're using a therapy dog or a service dog. And that we we want to keep that the way that is.
And a staff member needs to seek approval to bring these ones in.
Provides.
Health certification. If we're.
Required by law.
And that's another thing with those groups. The health certification is very specific also. Most of our horses do not have rabies. Our therapy horses get rabies shots.
In my, in my opinion, I think the horses would fall under that section, but if we are going to rewrite the policy, I think we need to table it, have it section added so that we can actually spend more than the ten minutes here looking at it before before deciding on this entire policy and it's probably not a big deal, just this policy offering.
Amendment tablet?
Yeah.
I make an amendment to table this.
Now, second that.
Oh, I gotta remember how that works. So so the do we go right to the amendment?
Yep.
Any question? So there's an amendment to this in a second, but we move this, we amend this, and we put this on.
Table.
Table. Sorry, why did I say whole? Which is words. Table. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, the next second reading of new policy eighty-three ninety-five, student mental health services.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Policy eight, three, nine, five, student mental health services. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Policy ninety-five hundred, relations with educational institutions and organizations.
To approve.
Second.
Now a second to approve policy ninety-five hundred, relations with educational institutions and organizations. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading of policy ninety-six hundred, staff slash student participation in community events. Motion and a second for policy ninety-six hundred, staff. Motion and a second for policy ninety six hundred, staff and student participation in community events, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There were no discussion items and there were no informational items, is there a motion to accept the policy in rules committee report?
Motion next now.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the policies and rules committee report, is there any further discussion? None, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next committee report, operations committee, there were no action items, no discussion items, there were informational items. Many of the whole meeting on August seventh, cooperative strategies reviewed the results of the one-on-one meetings with our board members and summarized their priorities for the district elementary boundary change process. They also gave us some information about dates and stuff, what's going to be coming up. The second was the report from Bobby Matherley, our director of buildings and grounds, giving an update on summer projects happening throughout the district.
Can I ask one question about the cooperative strategies? How are we going to, yeah, just one, how are we going to get the surveys out to people or make it public as well?
Um, well, both, there's two surveys that are going to go out. Uh, we'll put it in our newsletter, we'll put it in our school newsletter, and we'll probably send out a separate email to everybody as well. That's typically how we've done those things.
And this is just for more than just families, right? This is for the, this will go to all parents in the school district. But I mean, the community members fill out the survey as well.
Well, the survey is going to be on our website.
Okay.
So, but our, the notification will go to the parents.
Yeah. But I mean, this will affect, you know, people in the future as well, say somebody that just had a baby, they don't have somebody in the district now.
Yeah.
But.
That's cooperative strategies made their website, yeah.
Um, I was just working on that today, they're going to publish it, I believe, on Wednesday, and it's going to go in our back-to-school newsletter to parents on Wednesday with the survey to go out next week, I believe.
And their slideshow, yeah.
Yep. Yep.
That survey can only be done once, was that right?
I don't, I don't know if there'll be, there probably won't be restrictions on the number of times people can take the survey, because otherwise you'd be capturing personal information, and I think it's intended to be anonymous. The only way to, to limit that would be to find out who's in the survey. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I know, it's very, things, it'll, it's coming from my same IP.
I could double check, but I guess I just, but I.
Yeah. So, um, to go back to what, what Brooke asked and stuff, perhaps when that's ready to go, uh, maybe David or somebody from this, this office here could inform Maria and perhaps a article in the paper about the survey or.
That'd be nice.
A lot of press release.
Press release.
Be great.
All right, so is there a motion, is there any other questions? Is there a motion to accept then the operations committee report?
So moved. Time.
Motion and a second to accept operations committee report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Budget and insurance committee, there was only one action item, the gifts, grants and bequests, administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and bequests received in July twenty twenty three.
So moved. Sorry.
Motion and a second to accept the gifts, grants and bequests. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. There were no discussion items, the informational items, David began to give us a look at what the revenue and expenditure reports will be looking like. The numbers on the positive side. We're doing great. So is there a motion and a, to accept the budget insurance committee report?
Second.
The motion and a second to accept the budget insurance committee report, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Teaching and learning committee, action items none, discussion items none. Informational items at the committee, the whole meeting on August seventh, Crystal Hintsman, director of curriculum and instruction, gave updates on summer school, summer professional development and staff development days. Erica Hunt and Parker, assistant director of student services, then presented the twenty twenty two, twenty three seclusion and restraint data. Is there a motion to accept the teaching and learning committee report?
Both to approve.
Again.
There's a motion and a second to accept the teaching and learning committee report, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Personnel and negotiations committee, action items, administration recommends approval of the August twenty twenty three new hires and separations report.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the approval of the August twenty twenty three new hires and separations report, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There were no discussion items and there were no informational items. There are motion to accept the personnel and negotiations committee report.
Both to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the personnel negotiations committee report, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Legislative committee, action items none, discussion items none, informational items, WASBE resolutions, the WASBE resolutions book is now updated and posted online. Resolutions adopted by the annual WASBE delegate assemblies set the policy direction for the WASBE and its lobbying efforts. Board resolutions for consideration for the twenty twenty four delegate assembly must be submitted to the WASBE by September fifteenth. Clock is kind of turning pretty fast here, if we have anything that we want to submit this year. Second item, Governor Evers signed reading legislation into law. Governor Evers announced that he had signed Assembly Bill three twenty one, related to updating early literacy instruction into law as twenty twenty three Act twenty. From the governor's announcement, the bill relating to literacy drafted in coordination with the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, DPI, makes several comprehensive updates to literacy instruction in the state, designed to help improve reading and literacy outcomes for K-12 students. And there is a link that people can click on to read more. Is there a motion to accept the legislative committee report?
Approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the legislative committee report, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any other reports by members of the board? Obviously, the twelve building, I know I mentioned this a while back, but it officially sold, I think, on, uh, July twelfth. They did have to come down on the asking price for the accepted, accepted price a little bit, they had three fifty originally, they had to go down to three twenty due to some different things. So after realtor fees, they got to take two ninety nine something, so.
You know what that means for districts, what they're getting back?
Split per two ninety nine by seventeen, I don't remember exactly what the number was, it wasn't a whole ton, but. Do you have a quick math?
Two ninety nine?
Does it balance a budget?
About seventeen thousand?
No.
Okay. Yeah. Seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, twenty-four. It's more than, it's more than what we.
Yeah.
All right, any other district and program highlights?
I have a couple of updates.
Good.
One is, um, we sent out a press release on Friday, our high school principal also sent out an email to high school parents and students that we have extended the policy, we extended our, our practice at the building levels to extend to K-12 for cell phones being away the day from about eight to three o'clock, so students can use them before and after school, but we asked that when the bell rings, the focus is teaching and learning. Was very successful, I think, at the middle school this year, I think it helped to improve some of the social aspects between students and, um, some of the distractions that were happening in the classroom, so we're hopeful that it'll.
I didn't have a cell phone in school, so I turned out pretty good.
Yeah.
You had a black and white TV too.
I did have families that were concerned about that move last year, eventually come and say how it's been really amazing to see the transformation.
Even kids were good with it, yeah.
So I think, yeah, it was really positive last year.
Yep. So that's one thing, and then just another thing, we, next week is our new teacher orientation all week long. Molly, how many new teachers do we have? Thirty each?
Um, only one twenty per year.
Oh. On tricks. So we're excited to bring them onboard next week, and then the following week is our back-to-school events, so busy time.
Eight, that's the day.
It's the first Monday.
For speaking.
Yep.
And board members are invited to that.
The back-to-school gathering, yep.
Great, thank you. Anything else from anybody? Consideration of bills and pre-approved bills?
Bill.
Motion. There's a motion and a second to pay.
I didn't hear that, I didn't hear what that said.
There any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This time I'd like to adjourn, nice meeting. Thank you for everybody for being.